Thank all councilmembers in the presence except Ms. Mouse. And before we start into the department reports, I want to welcome Matthew back. Yes, you're back. I want to take time to thank all the department heads on stepping up and just doing a wonderful job. It was almost like Matthew was here. Of course, I know we weren't accessing him through email pretty much on a daily basis most of the time, but definitely on a weekly basis. And you guys just did a wonderful job. I hope it didn't ring much more than it normally does, especially to Renee stepping up and just, I mean, we never missed a beat. And I just want to tell you how fortunate that we are kind of staff like you guys and just continue to do what you do. So now we'll start with the code department.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the code department reports covering the period of April. Just some of the highlights from their report. We had thirty-two code inspections. We have a total of twenty-nine permits that are written, so those inspections are picked up now. We had nine new businesses open up and we had eight that closed. As far as major projects go, we look out at St. Anne's Catholic Church, the community closed, still in construction, and the Grace Town Church remodel of the old Max and Price building on North Broad Street is still ongoing. So we had some training that went on in that month. The Lord has attended two days of training at the JATO, which is Georgia Association of Business and Tax Officials. Debbie attended two days of classes for a permit technician certification, which she just recently passed and received that certification. Tom McClellan has attended class for oil erosion control and renewed his certification in that. The city marshal wrote seventy-eight prepared cleanup orders and did inspection on those, issued two citations, and represented the city and the municipal court. If you have any questions about the remainder of the report, I'd be glad to try and answer.
Thank you, Patrick.
Yes, sir.
Let me tell the comments.
Thank you, Mayor. The big thing to see this month in electric is fixed cost is eighty-three percent. That's because we have very low usage this month. We average around seventy, seventy-five percent, talking with MEAG, everybody was up around that eighty percent this month, mainly because our overall usage was down. Top user this month was eight-hundred-seventy-five gig. We're down to fifty above the three-hundred-and-fifty gig. We're continuing to push that down. That's down from a high of about a hundred and forty. So we're getting that usage down and people are following within, getting closer and closer to following within the rules and regs. We're still at peak usage of one-point-six gigabits, but that is growing. That is like five-minute average. If you look at a real-time average, that's a little bit higher. So we are in the process of making plans to get more bandwidth here in Monroe. Some highlights, we've started engineering to hit the fifty-five Marietta, which is across the street from fifty-six Marietta. We have figured out a way to make that expense neutral. We'll move some of our interconnects over to fifty-five, and our bill will probably stay about the same where it is at fifty-six. We'll have redundant routes to two different buildings, and if we have the problems that we've had in the past, fifty-six having some issues, we'll still have fifty-five to allow us to get out to the world. We're still in the process of working through our contracts on the channels to be able to compress those down and send those out in an open form to be able to open up more bandwidth for Internet, and I'll keep y'all posted on how that moves forward. I see that probably a third quarter project, but I just want to keep y'all abreast of where we're at. We've had some borings and testing done at the warehouse on our tank. The test results aren't here yet, but we have found a contractor that can remove the tanks under Matthew's spending limit. So we're going to have the tanks removed, and we'll have to do some more testing. If everything falls within where we think it's going to be and where it should be, that should be the extent of our expense. If there is some ground contamination, that'll be a little bigger expense. If there is some groundwater contamination, we'll cross that bridge when we get there. We hope we don't have that. Everything looks good, and we'll just, we'll prepare for the worst and hope for the best as we move along through this. But the tanks can be removed and gone under the city administrator's spending limit. We'll take care of that, and then I'll bring next month, I'll know the results of the testing, and I'll bring that to you next month. South Broad T, we have every light turned on today except for three. Two of them are up near where the Methodist Church road closure is going to be, and until that gets done, I can't turn those lights on. And then we have one individual light down near Avondale Millsville office that we've got to feed separately. But if you ride down through there tonight, you see ninety-nine percent of the light's done, and the trees should be coming in in a week or two, and we should be able to wrap this up. We did have some phone issues this past week. We changed vendors, and it was a tragedy. I'll take full responsibility for that. I thought we had that planned out well. I thought we had that covered, and we didn't. And we're going to do better to make that not happen again. We've hopefully got all our customers happy. If we haven't, I'll do my best to make them happy as we move forward. Charlotte Route Parkway has been engineered. We'll bring that to you next month. That should come in in around, you know, with the lighting comes in on, around ninety, ninety-five thousand. That is all of our electric territory except for five-hundred feet around the last pole that feeds the Board of Education. And so there's a little area up there that is Walton MC's territory that serves the Waffle House and the post office, but the rest of that is our territory. And it's the last, it and dear acres are the last open property we have in our territory. One other thing that's not on here, I spent most of the day in Atlanta with MEAG, I'm meeting with the EPD discussing EPA's carbon emissions regulations and rules. I know less now really than I knew when I walked in the door. The EPD doesn't know what it's going to be. The rule is being rewritten, will be issued in August, and we have a year, the EPD has a year to come up with a plan. It was good to have the meeting. We, a lot of cities were there. We expressed our concerns and worries on impact to our customers' rates and to our ratepayers. My big statement to the EPD was to remember that all this money comes directly from the ratepayer. It doesn't come from Georgia Power. It doesn't come from Walton MC or the City of Monroe. It comes from the ratepayer. And so we need to make sure we push that, in my opinion, off as far as we can. The mayor can update y'all, or I can update y'all more, you know, whenever you have any more questions. As I have more information, I'll bring it to you. But it looks like in August of this year, we will get the final rule from the EPA, then the EPD has a year.
And they'll probably be challenged in court for a while.
Already is. The question asked today was, you know, we had an election in 2016, and we have a court case already going on. What are the odds of this whole process changing? And the answer from the air quality lady from the EPD was, yes, it will change to some level, and nobody knows where we're going to be. And I'll take any questions you have. Thank you, Brian. Thank you, sir.
Tom, yes? Thank you, Mayor. You have before you the performance indicators, a couple of things to point out under utility customers. Looks like the overall count compared to this time last year's up considerably, so hopefully that's an indicator as far as growth for Monroe. The local option sales tax is coming in as budgeted, maybe a little bit lower than this time last year. I'm not really sure why. Obviously, we don't get, we don't get details, so I can't tell a lot about it, but we are coming in as budgeted, so we should be good on that. We've been working on collecting taxes, and we had a tax sale today. We started out with twenty-five advertising and getting letters out, and took eight to sell, the others paid, and two, all but two sold. So the two that did not sell are vacant lots, and they are typically preparted to sell unless you find somebody like the name, whatever, that just wants a vacant lot. So that's the performance indicators. On the financial report, cash balances for this time of the year looking really good. The expenditures and revenues coming in pretty much is budgeted. The expenditures are at or below thirty-three percent where it's where they should be. So we're pretty much on target citywide. Everything's looking really good. And then, of course, we've got this loss listed, and that's trending like they're with the loss. So if you'd like to take any questions.
Fire?
Yes, sir. Our report for April, the fire department fielded a hundred and twenty, excuse me, two-hundred-and-twenty calls into the station. We were dispatched by nine women, center on a hundred and ninety-six calls. Out of those hundred and ninety-six, seven were out to assist Walton County. We attended a couple relations events. The department had a total of two-hundred-and-twelve hours of training time. Fire investigations, we had one commercial fire here in town. As a note, as of this year, on May the twentieth, we have surpassed one thousand calls for the City of Monroe. We have went over the last three years, over two thousand calls a year, but it was in June, in July time period when we hit a thousand, so we're on, we're tracking to surpass. And these are no storm-related. We've been fortunate here in Monroe. We haven't had any serious weather issues that would uptick all our calls, but this is just calls for medical and fire services. That completes our, any questions? I'd be glad to ask. That's right.
Thank you, Mayor. We responded to three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-one calls for service. We had one-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seven-one calls to the police department. We were involved in two-hundred-and-eighty-seven court cases. We had four-hundred-and-twenty-one hours of training. And for the month of April, we reported sixty-one Part One crimes, and we reported a hundred-and-forty-five Part Two crimes. We made a total of a hundred-and-four adult arrests, and we had ten juvenile arrests. Our community service picked up approximately a thousand pounds of trash, and the department participated in five community events where we provided security for road races and such. And we also issued approximately three-hundred-and-forty-tens. And if you look a couple pages back, there's a breakdown of that three-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-one calls, how we, what we responded to. I'll take any questions.
Okay. Thanks, everyone. Solid place?
Thank you, Mayor. Our stats for April is trending upward. This particular recycling tonnage is up to almost one-hundred-and-seventy-three tons for the month of April. Transport station tonnage is up over six thousand tons. Curbside recycling is up close to twenty tons, nineteen-point-point-one tons curbside. And that's pretty much it. Y'all turns up, seem like all of the collections are, just one port on the Great American Cleanup. We had ten customers and collected point-sixty-seven tons of waste and thirty-one tonne. So participation was a little lower than it has been the last few years. And I'll take any other questions you might have.
Do you have any idea why all the statistics are up this month?
One reason is the weather, the spring break. That's typically the main, just get the weather and spring fever and cleanup, you know, take care of the projects. But also on the recycling side, we did put a cool market effort into advertising to get, get the system to participate more, and they've seen the response.
Good.
Thank you, Dan.
Streets?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Highlighting a few of the areas for the report for the month of April on the admin side. We rented out a community building eight times. Fleet maintenance division completed one-hundred-and-eighteen work orders and highlighting a thing about that, that work order system there is fixing to take a, not a drastic change, but somewhat of a change. We're going to implement issue track into the fleet maintenance division. Michael Byers worked pretty hard getting it set up. We've got it like we want it, and we're going to roll it out to the fire department probably within the next two to three weeks. Go from there to the PD, and from the PD to utilities and any other department that wants to use it. Just going to create that paper trail for us to create instant documentation and accountability in the shop as far as what needs to be done is getting done, making sure that we're able to follow through on all of those preventative as well as corrective maintenance issues in the shop. So we're looking forward to that. Coming down the line, our grounds crew, they're continuing to service all of our city facilities, power station and water pump stations. They were able to pick up about thirteen-hundred pounds of trash throughout the month. A street division repaired thirteen streets either through potholes, sinkholes, utility cuts throughout the city, almost about half a mile of ditch maintenance, a hundred feet of, it says new sidewalks, this is not new sidewalks, this is small repairs throughout the city, maybe a four-foot section in one place or a ten-foot section in another place. We're spending a lot of time trying to rehab what's close to the downtown area, getting it back to where it needs to be, whether it's bringing stuff up to speed as far as ADA compliant, making those handicap ramps accessible. We also replaced over a hundred feet of driveway pipe in the street division. The sign markings division completed thirty units of work there, whether it was a new sign or signs replaced, and as well as the building maintenance division completed forty-four work orders for the month of April. And I'll be glad to entertain any comments or questions regarding streets and transport month of April.
Mayor, I'd like to say to Jeremiah and Danny that I guess it's the first time in my ten years on council that I received two positive, very positive comments about the maintenance of the cemetery and the job that's being done over there. I want to pass that along to you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? Thank you, Jeremiah. Water, sewer, gas, and stormwater, Rodney?
Thank you, Mayor. Water, sewer, gas, and divisions all trending pretty much like it has all year. You'll notice in the water plant process, seems to be trending right with this year. Compared to last year, we're up about eight million gallons. We're pretty sure that's going to be more of the flushing side with the private property flushing hydrants and all. So drop down to wastewater plant, you'll notice this way up sixty-point-nine million gallons for the month of April. That's due to the large rain events we had during that month. We had some areas that flooded in our easements, and so we took on some extra water and went in the process of raising those manholes and get them above flood stage. And wait, the other thing I want to mention with wastewater collection, you'll notice our work orders have trended up pretty well this year, way up to forty-two this month. That's due to the services that we took over in January to the right away. And if you'll notice right below that, I added two columns, services installed and cleanouts installed, so we can start tracking how many new services we were installing and how many we just had to add cleanouts. So the work orders have increased as far as the services or cleanouts installed. It hasn't been too bad. So that's, that's looking good. Hopefully, that'll better continue. And outside of that, everything else is pretty, pretty normal. So if you have any questions, I'll be more happy to answer them.
Okay. Thank you, Rodney. Thank you. For live in committee information, finances?
Thank you, Mayor. We have three items on the agenda this evening, first being discussion and approval of worksite wellness presentation.
Thanks. If we don't, I've handed out a new presentation, should refer to this. I'm going to introduce Diane Geiger with Worksite ORX. They do our clinic currently, and what we're proposing tonight is to cut out the middle man, so to speak, as in Bravo, who has been doing our wellness testing, basically the testing only and then categorizing for us. But Worksite is prepared to do that, and it does that with some other clients, and we just think that that's, that's the way to go. So we've asked them to do a presentation and a proposal to do that. We have put Bravo on notice. Then it's the time for the meal, and it goes to automatically renew. So that's the presentation tonight. If you so choose to make a motion to go with this, we will put Bravo on full notice that we won't be utilizing their services. So I'll let Diane take care of the presentation.
I'm Becky, and everyone, welcome back. So let me provide an update since, I suppose, last I was here, and some of the progress that we've made in the integration of our employee wellness planning with our coaching program. If you remember, last year, that was, that was really our objective was to actually get that program up and running. And too simple goal, really, and that was to bring the biometric event into the clinic with our existing staff there, where we have our medical assistant up, rather than utilizing an outsourced vendor to do that for a lot of reasons. Number one, because it really familiarizes, I think, employees and spouses and the families with the clinic, an opportunity to get folks in and meet the staff and just see what the facility is all about. And we did that. We wanted to offer the opportunity and encourage employees and spouses to participate in the coaching program. So if you'll remember, we offered them the opportunity to regain your score, get a point back, if they did participate in our health coach. It's just really a good foot forward, you know, just all in good faith that they could get enrolled, get in the program, and we're going to make some good progress. And we did that. We've had some good results, and we've also faced challenges with some of those. We had today, and probably seeing the numbers in charge, there's eighty employees right now, employees and spouses participating in the coaching program. We have ninety-four people actually participating to date. So all ninety-four of those individuals have gained a point back through their commitment and participation with our health coach. We'll be presenting our annual report very soon, probably within the next couple of weeks, and we'll have a lot more good information to share with everyone about that, some of the progress that we're implementing. Right now, actually, is that eighty-nine to a hundred percent of all the participants in the health coaching program have made progress with one or more of their goals. Now, that could be simply losing five pounds. That could be simply, you know, not with smoke for months. You know, baby steps, sometimes that's what it takes, but they are making progress. And then we have some goals that are a little more, that are a little tougher to reach, and we have some individuals hitting those too. So we'll talk a little bit more about that. And what Renee was talking about, in operating two programs that do some very similar things, there's obviously some operational difficulties in the processes that puts strain on our city staff, that puts strain on the clinic, and just communication with our employees and spouses, so everybody is just running through the mix, right? So with those redundancies, there were also some redundant costs. So that's phase one, and now we're moving into phase two pretty naturally, and what we're proposing is that we fully integrate. And that means that we would expand the current coaching services to include the results-based program that we have right now that manages incentives and points through Bravo. We would replace those services and did a good bit of that even last year, as I said, using redundancies and doing that. So the objective would be to fully integrate as soon as possible, as soon as everyone is comfortable doing that. That's indeed what the C D is to do. So we'll eliminate those redundancies in administrative efforts for spread line communication with our employees and spouses and family members of all of our programs that we have in place. That would, in addition to those improvements, there would be a thirty-one percent reduction in cost for just removing those redundancies. I'll leave everyone to see also, I may have to look through that, briefly, but I think all of the steps and the things that we do in the managing incentives. But certainly, if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to answer those. So I guess in a nutshell, the annual event program design setup that would typically cost twenty-five and it would be fifteen-hundred, because we've done a lot of that work already. The annual participant fee would be one-on-three versus approximately a hundred-and-fifty for a participant. Then the estimate would cost in for twenty-fifteen, twenty-sixteen, and in period would be roughly twenty-seven, twenty-eight. So in comparison to what we had, it's thirty-one percent reduction in cost. Hope you'll move to the next page. I'll be an update on clinic activity and office coaching activity. So quarter two is our first, first three months that we were in operation, that Worksite began to manage another two. Total visits were two-hundred-and-sixty-one, for third quarter, three-hundred-and-fifty-one. Q four, three-hundred-and-forty-six. So the total of visits of nine-fifty-eight thus far. The number of unique patients that make up those number of visits, one-hundred-and-twenty for Q two, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven for Q three, one-hundred-and-seventy-nine for Q four, so a total of two-hundred-and-forty-six unique patients coming into the clinic. That's a, that's a pretty good number, seventy-three percent of the three-hundred-and-thirty-seven eligible's.
Your quarters are not accounted quarters? I mean, quarter four of twenty-fifteen is what period of time?
That is January through the end of March.
Okay. That's your fourth quarter?
Yes. Yes. And keep in mind also that in the eligible's in the three-hundred-and-thirty-seven, there are children, there are adult dependents, I guess, in that nineteen-to-twenty-six type age group, and so they're all in there. If you removed some of that, I mean, that some of those folks may or may not ever really participate, or we'd love them to, that number's probably going to go up, so that's excellent penetration. Really, really good, some of that's what we've seen and what we've been seeing.
And I might add that quarter three is when we did do the testing in the clinic, so that's why those numbers are higher.
That would be COVID-ish, isn't it?
Yes, that's correct. So on the coaching activity side, we have unique coaching participants, eighty, and that's through the actual end of what we were just talking about, Q four, so the end of March. But going into April and May, as I've said before, we have ninety-four participants. Here is, we got one-hundred-and-sixty-seven coaching sessions, utilizing televideo, iPhones, computers, in-office, home office. Certainly welcome any feedback that anyone had participated in either of three of those ways, or just any feedback that you have to share. The targeted participants of one-hundred-and-twenty-three individuals, that would be anyone that would be estratified, when we pulled all of the HRA data and the biometric data in, that would be stratified as high risk. So individuals that we absolutely want to touch and want to bring into the program. Those are the chronic, typically the chronic population. So the one-hundred-and-twenty-three, we have the eighty is what it shows here, and then we have ninety-four. So that's sixty-five percent participation rate. That's a, that's an excellent number for the first year. Very good. So the offerings, everyone to get a point back, I think, will work. Glad to answer any questions, any reviews?
As I said, basically, the recommendation we would hope for is that we would not contract with Bravo, but would contract through Worksite for the clinic and the wellness, and just load it on in one person. It'll make it a lot easier on the staff, and I think the employees too, because there was some confusion because you had to fill out Bravo. Those of you that participated know you had Bravo and Worksite, so there was some confusion. So hopefully, that'll be eliminated.
Right, just question, because everything looks so easy answer here, right? You know that we need to go with this route. Significant cost savings. Easier to do, more fluid thing. So what does Bravo say that we ought to do, and do they say we should stay with them? And what's the argument for Bravo?
I put Bravo on notice. I have not heard from Bravo. I sent it certified with return receipts. I know they got it. I haven't heard.
Is there any downside from making this change?
The downside, they're supposed to give us all this analysis. The downside, they're supposed to give us all this analysis of how it's saving money and, but they're not taking into account any of the things that they have access to. And in fact, before we made the change to Worksite, Care here was making a pitch to do that. So I think there's a move to put it all under one roof, so to speak. Bravo does do some analysis, like, you know, they'll take one year's results and say, well, you had this many that had a high blood pressure, and now you only have this many. And so I'm assuming that that is what their value-added benefit is.
Will we lose some of those reporting?
No, they'll not. They have given us...
Same, at least it's good reporting.
Absolutely. And actually, should be better reporting, I would think, because they'll have other data as well, so.
It's somewhat siloed.
Looks like an easy decision. Well, I'll make a motion that we approve this plan to move to Worksite. Is it, if, do I need to make a motion that the committee recommends this to the council? Is that...
That's what we're doing.
Yeah, where we are, okay. And then I'll make the motion that we recommend to the council full approval of this program.
Second.
I'm going to have a motion to second, all in favor of the House. I oppose, we'll recommend the change to the council. Second item is fiscal year 2014 audit to financial statements. Ms. President.
All right. And before we move on, I've already had one question. Just because we're not doing Bravo does not mean that we're not testing, so. The testing will still, it will just be called, it'll be under Worksite, my pack way to help.
My question was that when you're going on Bravo as Worksite instead of the COVID and stuff?
You'll go, my pack way to help, because you were having to go to both websites last year. They'll all be handled under the, my pack way to help. Fresh. And we'll get information out to the employees, so if you have a question, we'll get all that information out. Thanks, sorry. Tim Lyons with Malibu Chiefs.
Good evening. Renee, so I'm Tim Lyons, I'm a manager in the state political practice with Baldwin and Jenkins. I'm here to go over the results of our audit of the city's financial statements for the year ended December 31st, 2014. You should have three separate documents that Renee has provided to you. I am primarily going to be looking at the actual comprehensive annual financial report for the city's CAFER, and then also what we call our annual audit agenda. I will touch briefly on the single audit report, which is the third document, but as I'll get into later, we didn't have any audit findings this year, so that report is actually pretty short. So, starting with the audit agenda, we call this the agenda, it's sort of our overview of the audit, it contains all of our required communications, things that we are required to bring to you, the body in charge of governance of the city. The first few pages, as you see on there, just the information about both our governmental practice and our firm as a whole. We want to just point out that we are one of the largest providers of audit services to governments in the southeast. This is something that we specialize in, this is where they, it's not tax season, so we pick up a few governments and work with them. So in today's environment, as Renee can attest, it's important to have the knowledge, just with all the complexities that are out there. Starting on page four of the agenda is kind of where the important stuff starts as far as the audit goes. The most important thing about halfway down on that page is the paragraph about the opinion. We provided an unmodified opinion on the city's financial statements, or what was that is a clean opinion, which basically says the financial statements are materially correct in accordance with the county rules in the United States of America. The paragraph down there at the bottom is other reporting. Government audit standards do require us to issue another report about the city's internal controls, compliance with laws and regulations, and during this year, the city had to have a single audit because expenditures and federal funds exceeded the five-hundred thousand dollar threshold. That's what that single audit report is, and like I said, the most important part to know about that report is that there aren't audit findings this year, which is a pretty significant thing. The audit standards that are out there now are pretty strict on us, where we have to report, and so to have a, to have a single audit report with no findings is significant, and Renee and her team should be committed to that. Going on in the agenda, pages five and six, just something to point out, to be proud of, the city's road board. The city does prepare a comprehensive annual financial report or a CAFER. Governments are not required to prepare this document because it is so involved, there's a lot of extra stuff in there beyond just your basic financial statements. And the city has continued to do that. The previous year's CAFER was submitted to the G F L A, which is the grading body, so to speak, of all the CAFERS that get submitted, and the city was awarded the certificate, that's included in this year's, in this year's CAFER, so good things to be proud of there. Start on page seven, and really going through page eight and nine, just some basic analysis on all the financial statements. One thing I always have to point out, is to actually return to the CAFER and flip over to page, page seventeen, rebound sheet for governmental funds. One of the things, one of the first things that most people that are doing analysis on governmental statements will look at is the city's general fund, the main operating fund of the city for governmental activities. Looking down at the bottom, about three-quarters down the page, that unassigned fund balance in the general fund, two-point-six million dollars available for spending on the city's ongoing operations, is about thirty percent of the city's annual expenditures, and that's a healthy fund balance. That is, you know, the kind of the minimum threshold that people like to see is about twenty percent, so that's a good healthy fund balance, unassigned for the city's general fund. I know, you know, there was one section in the CAFER that I would want to look at as a city justice, maybe M V N A. Renee doesn't believe that I'm preparing it, not much more information about the budgetary highlights in there. But kind of going back to the agenda, that's sort of what you see on page nine there in that chart about general fund revenue versus expenditures. That's, that's sort of, that includes both your other financing sources and other financing uses, the transfers in, transfers out, but if you can, if you look and kind of see that in 2010, kind of, kind of towards the tail end of the recession, you can see that expenditures still outstrip revenues in ten and eleven, and then kind of the last few years, we've seen that trend kind of reverse itself. So the city's general fund moving in the right direction. Pages ten through, really through about eleven, and then start twelve into the end of March thirteen, just kind of gives another overview of what else is in the CAFER. Got your footnotes, your statistical section, which is a lot of historical data on the city. And then getting to page thirteen is where our required communications are, where really we just kind of have to go over here, just basic audit stuff. You know, we were independent of the city of the road. We didn't encounter any difficulties with management in performing the audit. There really weren't any new significant accounting policies that were required to be changed or implemented for 2014. That, of course, will be different with 2015 with GAZU St. sixty-eight and the pension standards. But this year, there weren't really any significant standards that we had implemented this year. We didn't have any undirected misstatements or disagreements with management. The rest of those there are on page fifteen. On page sixteen, we did have one, what we call a management point or a recommendation, and it really just had to do with documentation of how the city was handling one specific part of the administration of their federal programs. And basically, when, when the city contracts with an outside party that involves federal awards, they're required to check this database to make sure that the party isn't suspended or debarr from contracting to be paid with federal funds. The city did that and even had documentation to support that they had had communications with G F A, in this case, the federal funds were passing through the Georgia Department of Finance Authority. One thing we just kind of said with the city was, there's an actual database online, it's the system for award management, it's a federal database. When you do check that database, just print out the results of that search and keep it in your grant files. It's just a documentation thing, really, so. And then page seventeen kind of gets into the other things we just want to point out. These, this is kind of what we did, some of the stuff that'll be coming down in future years. Obviously, GAZU St. sixty-eight is the most significant, you know, we've been in communication with Renee, and I know that she and some of her team in attendance with the training that we've done about implementing that standard, what that would look like this year. We'll be in contact with Renee throughout the year to make sure that both y'all and the actuaries and us are all on the same page, to make sure that we can, we'll get that implemented and get all that reporting incorporated to the CAFER next year, to make sure everything is right on track. With that, I'll take any questions.
I didn't obtain a motion to accept the audit.
So moved.
Motion, hold a second.
Second.
All in favor of the House?
No.
Okay, we'll recommend that to council next week. Fund, finance item is a discussion approved with outstate travel.
The request is for three staff members to attend the Q S one conference, sorry, software conference, August the twentieth, in the area of South Carolina. That was have it near their headquarters, which is out of state, and you'll have permission to do that. This year, they, I think they're charging twenty-five dollars to attend, so just at a minimal cost, we'll stay the one night, since it does stay over, but other than that, that'll be down the cost.
I have a motion to approve the outstate travel.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, hold a second. Second. All in favor of the House?
opposed.
And we will recommend that to council next week. That concludes finance, the committees agenda, move.
Okay. Airport.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Larry, would you give us an update, please? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you. The airport commission again is working very diligently to get our fuel farm in. We were told that will be done by the end of this month, so that will be forward on schedule. Jeremiah has been doing a great job of helping us clear the obstacle survey issues. We're now at fifty percent of the landowners have been contacted and moved to remediation in those sites. We hope by the end of the month or early, just the following month, we'll have that taken care of as well. On the fuel farmer duty to finalize the fuel services agreement, their dedication, the terms to finalize that document, so we can get that in the process as soon as the fuel arrives for the service fleet. One just quick thing from a social point of view, this last week here was the E S P event at the airport. I really am proud of the way the airport community came together and supported this event. There were, these numbers are not exact, but about a hundred aircraft rides given by pilots at the airport. There were over twenty loads, pardon me, over twenty loads of jumpers that went on Saturday. So great outpouring there. The churches and civic organizations provided food and entertainment. So it was a great fundraising event, E S P. Let's hold to this, it's one of their big fundraising opportunities. Last year, the numbers were about forty-two thousand dollars raised. This year may be a little less because of some competing events that weekend, but we still expect very, very good outpouring of revenue for E S P. So thank you very much for working to work on some of our projects as well, and in the coming months, I'll give you reports of this. Any questions that I could mind answering?
Thank you, Larry.
If I could just make a comment, I was there Saturday afternoon for the E S P event there at the airport and had an opportunity to talk to some of the people. There were many people here that were not from this area, I mean, that flown in and were there participating, and some of the people, I don't know the couple from Diablo Albany that flew in, that participated, volunteer, he was one of the volunteers taking people up in flight, very complimentary of some of the news that was going on at the airport and, you know, what was going on here. They were, they were outpraised from the downtown people, so y'all doing a good job. Thank you.
Okay, public works.
We have nothing, Mayor.
Utilities?
We don't have anything, right, Mayor.
Public safety?
No discussion, Mayor.
Economic development?
I'll ask Ms. Cross to come up. I think she has a special guest with her tonight who'll also be making a presentation to the council.
Thank you. Good evening. Yes, tonight, as far as economic development is our downtown development, a big portion of it, and so invited Lisa Anderson, the chair of our D D A board, to review with you our D D A work plans that we've been processing for 2014 to date. We're about to have our annual retreat again, sometime in July, go over, revise these work plans, and we'll have to get new projects, because a lot of them need done. So, please, Lisa, I'll share those with you. You should have them on the agenda.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, Mayor, Council, thank you, Brooklyn. You all should have the work plan for 2014, the big thing, and we have been extremely busy. We have accomplished and implemented probably ninety-five percent of what we see here. We will be meeting in July for our fifteen, sixteen work plan. And I wanted to just let you know that if you, any suggestions that you may have that you'd like to see us implement, we're welcome those suggestions. We have a wonderful board and committees and so many volunteers that have been very helpful in implementing these activities. So I just wanted to give you an update and see if you have any suggestions or any questions Our economic restructuring committee, I think there, we've done extremely well with our farmers market. We are in discussion stages of a makers market, which will bring those talented people together, artisans who, you know, discipline and sell their art or food products and things like that. So that is something that we were in the discussion here, trying to make that happen. We have done a great job with signage. We have, under our organization committee, our goal was to raise thirty thousand dollars this year, and we believe we're at the forty-one thousand dollar level. So that is a lot to say that people are investing in our community and we can, so thank you to those of you who have invested, and we really appreciate it. We have a great aside grant program. We've been working on children's park, it's still on the road, and most definitely we're working on our street escape and planters and things and downtown. So any questions or suggestions, please feel free to make those representations.
If council members have things they want to recommend for the D D A to look at during the retreat from a work plan perspective, should they contact you or just go through C A D?
Please feel free to contact me or C A D, and we're welcome to attend the session. As I said, I'm the D D A, who either say or I do, and they've presented representation on our, we really appreciate that. All of you, city council members, so support us.
Thank you.
You know how many downtown buildings we have lately, right?
No, no, that answer, but that is all it is. No, I don't know the exact number. We're having summer interns again, and they actually, today was their first day. We'll get to meet them next month, but that's their project that we're going to work on this summer, is the property inventory of every downtown parcel. So more than just Broad Street, we're going all the D D A boundaries, and that way we'll have an update list of vacancies and hopeless contact information for owners, so that we can begin kind of casting that net wider to market. so that we can begin kind of casting that net wider, so market, because what you see is starting to fill up.
We also, through a comment, have implemented a committee through the CBV board to work on brochures for our visitor center that will be hopefully opening by that point this year. And we'll be getting in on it the first time. So, we'll be, you know, be a great idea of brochures for all retail spaces and restaurants, any, any business center that will be on the mound. Also, some walking trails and some, some other brochures that will be placed in the visitor center. So, we're excited to get that, and we'll get some plans to spot it with the chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you.
Items of discussion coming up next week is rezon 404 East Church Street. Patrick.
Sir, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a petition by ATF Enterprises for a property located at 404 East Church Street. They're just looking to rezone from existing R1 zoning to B1 in order to allow them to, well, their stated purpose is to be able to put a personal care home in there. And we have some recommendations from the planning commission, so we've recommended for approval on that. As long as they revert it back to a single occupancy and do something with the grounds. It's been kind of a high sore property, so we've asked them to take care of that and also complete some repairs that they received approved last year that they haven't yet done. So, we've approved, I mean, recommended for approval based on those conditions on that one. Have any questions?
Patrick, a question on that. If you're going out from Broad Street on Church Street, where do the, where does the current zoning change from business to residential?
Currently?
Currently.
Just beyond this property at the Sparrow Hill Inn. But there's, there's not, it's not all business. There's residential interspersed going up Church Street. So, it kind of, it can go back and forth as you go down the road. But the business ends at Village Avenue, I guess, and then it has some more residential. And then there's a business use at Sparrow Hill Inn.
Spare, Sparrow Hill Inn would be the only business beyond Village currently.
Yeah, until you get out further out, yes.
Further out. Just as a, as a, I'm not disagreeing with this one. I'm asking a question more in general terms from a zoning perspective. Does it make sense to have interspersed business and residential, business residential, you know, kind of situations? Or does it make more sense to approach a neighborhood and say, do you want to change? Or, I mean, I, I'm just asking a question.
Well, from a sense perspective, I mean, sometimes it does, and sometimes it doesn't. The B1 zoning, which is a commercial zoning, is a transitional zoning. So, to intersperse that with residential makes a little more sense than to try and throw a B2 or B3 in there, which would be like a highway business type of commercial zoning. So, with it being, because it's called neighborhood commercial zoning, it's, it is, it offers a buffer and a transition in those instances. So, from that perspective, it does make sense, but.
So, what is, what's allowed on the B1?
Oh, goodness, that's a whole lot more than we could probably go.
Well, I mean, I don't mean all of the details, but jail is speaking.
The, the personal care home use that they're asking for is, there's, there's a great many other uses that I really couldn't enumerate right now.
Okay.
But it's, it's, it's not the same type of use you'd see in a highway business where more like gas stations and home service centers and appliances and things like that. It's more what would be conducive to a neighborhood and serving a neighborhood.
So, when this one has gone to the planning zoning?
Yes, they, they have reviewed this in their last meeting and made the recommendation you see there.
Were there any public comments?
I have to review the minutes, but I do remember that Dickson came, expressed some concerns, and asked that we, you know, try and limit it to just the use of personal care home. And actually, if I did review minutes, that is one of the, one of the recommendations that did not get on here. And that should be that we do limit the use on this rezon to the personal care home use.
Which house is this?
I'm sorry?
Which house is it?
Um, you remember which house used to be the Red Cross building? It's on the corner across College Street from Sparrow Hill Inn.
Oh, that's what I call, okay.
That's been used as a duplex, hasn't it?
It has, and that's one of the recommendations, to go back to a single occupancy and be serviced with just one set of utilities and give your minds that way.
Patrick, you used to get put a personal care home in professional zoning, and that's not the case anymore? Is that right?
That's correct.
So, he just, okay.
Now, will there be a public hearing on that of rezon? Is that not hearing, please? That'd be the public hearing, that's right. That's what I'm saying. Your sign said people could come. Actually, okay.
Any other questions on 404 East Church Street? Now, we'll move on to the 804 South Broad Street.
Okay. 804 South Broad Street is, this, this John student, or actually, Ken is still a student, still requesting a rezon for similar purpose from R2 zoning to B1. R2 is basically multifamily, so I think that'd be a good, a good rezoning. And it's on the highway, but they're not asking for all the way to a B3 rezon. They're just going to the neighborhood commercial rezon. And their stated purpose for requesting the rezon is also to have a personal care home there. The code department asked for some recommendations from the planning commission. We didn't really come up with any in the meeting, except for that we wanted to advise the applicants that if they do any significant exterior renovations, they are in that corridor district overlay, and that those requirements might apply based on the extent of their renovations.
How many personal care facilities do we have here now?
Currently, I think we have, in the city limits, about seven. I'd have to look at the state website again to see how many have licensing, but I think we have seven, maybe eight in the city limits right now. And most of them, just as an aside, are doing a pretty good job. We have some that we need to keep an eye on, but most of them have residents that are happy and well taken care of, and they keep up their properties and cause very little disturbance or problems.
Okay. Move on to the rezon 342 Toll Road Street.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And this is an application made by three, a company called Three Four Toll Road Street that owns the trailer park that is located on Toll Road Street. And the reason for this rezon is to go from existing zoning to R3, which is, well, it's no longer R3. It's called manufacturer home, MH. And they want to go to R1A in order to take a double Y manufacturer home and make it a single home site adjacent to the property so that they can sell it fee simple. And it's a, it's an allowed zoning use in R1A. And they're going to, they're just going to be taking that portion of the church, Mo Home Park, and, and make it a single family residential zone. We have recommended for approval with the no conditions.
Is that one, does that one, does it face the park? It faces Tow, Toll Road Street?
That's correct, yes.
And they just want it separate from the park?
Well, they're going to parcel it off. I mean, I don't know what all their motives are, but I think it's a, basically, they're going to be able to sell that fee simple, and then they can cash flow that into upgrading the park.
But it's a stick-built house or a trailer?
No, it's a, it's a manufactured home.
Will that open the door for other requests for manufactured homes here in the city?
Well, actually, a manufacturer home, that's a DCA, and other proof, is allowing any single family residential lot as long as it meets those requirements as a, as a single family home. The only difference in uses than apart, you can have a cluster of them in a smaller area. And if you have a manufactured home on a single family residential lot, you have to meet the requirements of that no classification, whether it's R1A or R1.
Well, the county requires you to build a detached garage, I think, if you were to bring a trailer park in the county. So, do we have this similar ordinance?
I'm not sure if they have a manufactured home park requirement. I know if they have, if they're putting a manufactured home on a single family residential lot, then they do have that requirement. They have also roofing material requirements and pitch requirements. We do have some that are not exactly the same as the county, and we don't require the detached, detached garage.
Any other questions on this program? Okay. We have bypass update. I'm certain there'll be, if there was nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
Second.
Motion by Scott.
Second.
Motion by Dick, all in favor? To adjourn to executive session.